I'm Chairman, we're live.
Good morning and welcome to our May 5th Commissioner Agenda. First up is our Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll stand with me please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did anybody have any changes to the agenda? I did, I'll give you an update on the Commissioner's discussion. I did not write a letter to the McCall Donley School District in Cascade on SRS, but I'll give you an update there. Other than that, I didn't see any changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes for, or approve the Agenda for Monday, May 5th.
I've moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First up, the meeting minutes of April 28th.
I did not have any changes.
I read it all, looked fine.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of April 28th as presented.
Second.
I moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Approve the claim to Dally Ripple Construction. Doug on these as we go. I don't remember what the MLU said, but is there like draws? I mean, is this normal that we would go through and pay bills as we go on something?
Chairman Commissioners, my understanding is this claim was presented to avoid any potential increase from tariffs that have been assessed.
It was outside.
Of this aid that takes effect. First approach to me by Facilities Director Scott Klingon. He heard the claim, presented it to the Commissioners for consideration. I don't know if he had anything to add. He indicated to me a reason, which I've indicated to. I don't know any more than that, if this is going to be common. If you recall, we did do this on the lighting or the road department building, so I
There he is.
Don't know
Morning Scott.
If the Commissioners can expect this on a ongoing basis.
I mean usually, usually you get progress draws through a project, especially if it takes more than a month. You know, if you're small houses, yeah, you go in, rough it in, all your roughing's done within a month. You do your roughing draw, but on a big project like this, you'll have monthly progress draws. And that's, that's normal.
I'm familiar with that, but this is specifically for one item?
I was trying to find it in the packet. What's, what's it called in the packet?
Commissioner Klingon, can you come up and answer some questions?
Rebar.
So the rebar request. But I'm just not familiar with paying this type of thing specifically. I, you know, it wasn't part of a progress draw. Where are we at with this?
Well, we're trying to purchase it for American supply will not hold the price unless make the purchase. And we're trying to buy it, buy the project, the rebar for the project before tariffs make it go up. So we're trying to do it to save money.
And what other products are at risk or?
Right now, that's, you know, I don't foresee any, you know, we already bought, you know, got the scale because of getting another steel product. Steel's all bought out for doing the repairs inside. And then this is kind of the last thing we see right now, just trying to buy it. Because I can tell you, when I was working, Ridgeway Industrial did a, a cheese plant mountain home. Didn't buy our copper outright before the project and it bankrupted the business. The four inch, the price of copper went up so much over the co, you know. Just trying to do this to keep the cost down. And you know, as we know, with this tariff stuff going on, we don't know, you know, what's going to really happen since we don't seem to produce a lot of our steel anymore.
This being our possession or will it be in Dally Ripple? Where's this going to be stored?
It'll be stored at the site up there, so it'd be, yep.
Anybody else have any questions on this one? Not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claim for Dally Ripple Construction Services in the amount of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and five dollars and fifty cents for the rebar.
I've moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Do you mind just letting Rita know?
Looks like we need to set the July 7th Commissioner Date. We neglected to do that last time.
Madam Chairman, yeah, my apologies. But that is on the agenda, just to schedule that meeting.
About that, so we started on the 16th instead of the 7th, so. I have a motion approved July 7th.
I would move that we approve July 7th. As an official Commissioner meeting?
That was for?
It was for the tax.
Johannes.
Yeah, Johannes, mhm.
I have a second?
A second.
I moved in second at all in favor? I This isn't an action item, but instead of doing a letter to McCall Donley and Cascade School Districts, I reached out, I had a nice conversation with Tim Thomas about it. Of course, they are, they have a huge hit with this. They were using it as one-time funds, making sure, because none of us know, you know, whenever we're going to get it. So they were doing school remodel with it. Excuse me. And what the legislature did last year, not this year, by moving those funds over to the school districts for school repair, that actually is kind of replacing these funds for them. So this is not a huge hit to them, but Cascade, this is a pretty large hit for a small school district. I did email with Joni because I couldn't get her on the phone. And so she's appreciative of everything that the Commissioners are doing to work with our congressional delegation to try and get this moved forward. Unfortunately, it's a huge hit to the county and our road funding also. We would normally get eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in road funding and another hundred thousand in Title III.
Three, yep.
And so that's, it's just a huge hit all the way around. Title II actually, anything that would have been on the forest. You know, historically, we've put thirty or forty thousand into forest maintenance. So this is a very large hit to our county. We are going to have to talk about funding structures. But I did speak with them. I thought, you know, Doug gave me good advice in reaching out personally. They do get letters, I guess, also from their administration in some way, probably State Board of Education in some way. But I thought it was important that we had a one-on-one conversation with them about what we're trying to do to put this back into place, so.
Yeah, when I was on the school board, it was when that money came in, even prior, when it was still logging and that money was in, it was all used for capital expenses. And it was never for teachers' pay or nothing, it was just capital expenses. And they always look forward to it because they could use that, fix this, fix that, you know, improve this, whatever. And now we've had two years of no SRS.
Well, only one. We were funded.
We finally get funded last year? Oh.
We were at the end of the three-year cycle, so. Anyway, unfortunately, that is a big hit to our community and we need to continue to fight that fight, so.
We don't, we don't need to prove anything on that then.
Nope, we do not. Larry, are you doing the snowmobile trail grooming program agreement?
I've got a copy of that date.
Why, why are we expanding the date?
We're going to 25. We, we did 24 already, but they're trying to get done early, so this is 25's annual agreement.
So we are just going from April though, April 15th to May, are you?
Evidently.
So the, the question that I'm asking, I guess, is we're required to perform a bunch of maintenance. So what we're doing is we're expanding our maintenance requirements for another six weeks.
The original agreement they sent us, there was an expansion. This is the same as with the ones we've signed in the past. The other thing they tried to do is change the way we paid people. And we sent it back and they fixed that.
What is the purpose of signing for another six weeks? I'm confused. I mean, we're not snow grooming anymore.
They didn't, because they didn't sign anything this year. Or this, this year, they only signed for 24.
But we've already done the work.
We've done the work, it's all done.
So this is an agreement so that we can go and get reimbursed for?
No, there's no reimbursement, there's no nothing. Yeah.
Just paperwork?
Just paperwork.
Interesting.
Unfortunately.
Madam Chairman, this was supposed to, something that was supposed to be done in January, so it's coming, it's delayed.
It should have been done in November.
I was going to say, we should have done this last year, we've already done the work, so.
Right, and the one we did sign was the five-year agreement. So that's signed, we don't have to worry about that for five years. But they want to catch up on their annual. And we did a paid annual, we just didn't do a voice annual.
Interesting. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the National Forest Snowmobile Trail Grooming Program Agreement.
Second. I've moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Got the proper name on it, which is kind of nice.
So who has this calendar, Larry, to get this done for, or when you're gone? Is this on a calendar? Is this yours?
Madam Chairman, my apologies for interrupting you. What happens is once we get all of the signatures, if we apply it to the Clerk's Office for record retention, we have the ability in Laserfish to set it for a six-month reminder. When it is up, when the six months is ready to be renewed, then we would send it out to the new Recreation Director or the new whoever within the Recreation Department to remind them that this agreement is due.
Perfect.
And this, the agreement should come from the Forest Service, but they don't have, a lot of their agreements, people have left them. Yeah, so this is kind of a surprise to me that Zachary made it through. Thank you guys for signing this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. And Clerk Miller, I think I owe you a thank you on the Master Services Agreement with Clearwater. I had originally sent it to put this on the agenda and then I went, oh, needs to go through legal. And I think the Clerk's Office did that, so. Appreciate that very much. So this is the award that we had last week, so that we can go ahead and get started on the event venue planning. Does have any questions on this?
No, I read this last night, I was good with it.
I would move that we approve the Master Services Agreement with Clearwater Financial for Valley County Fairgrounds Master Plan for the sum of fifty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Second.
And moved in second at all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And just to update, we have a meeting scheduled on the 16th to start the process, so.
Thanks.
We are moving forward.
Perfect. All right, next up. I assume Ken that you're handling these? Sign the Woody Biomass Grant Progress Reports?
Yes, I have a few things for signature. So a couple of weeks ago, we were advised by Forest Service that we still has money left in this Woody Biomass Pilot Project Grant. And we need to do some catch-up on our quarterly status reports and quarterly financial reports. So I have those here for your signature. And then I also have the request for reimbursement to submit for the balance of that, that grant there.
Perfect. Anybody have any questions of Ken, looking at that?
No.
They required one monthly and so we were that far behind on the monthly ones?
They require quarterly.
Really? What are the monthly ones then? Project updates, five, six, seven?
Those are referencing the quarterly, the different quarters.
Got it.
So I'll bring these up.
I'll make a motion, just do all four at the same time?
I've moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
All of those little tabs.
Thank you, you're so well organized. I'll let you date them. You need my name and title on everything?
If you just want to put your name, that'd be fine.
That was a great, oh, thank you.
She needs her stamp.
She just wants to use my stamp. By the time I'm gone, Neil, you might be right, I might have to.
Don't say gone, say when I leave this job, gone. Everything you've been telling me this morning is like, that's a scary word.
A whole nother meaning, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And I'm not there to help my sisters, that's a big problem.
You have to leave, you go ahead, Catlin, I can, the show.
I understand that.
You've got to take care of yourself.
Take advantage of that if I need to.
I remember those years when I had to take care of all our folks and it was, that was no fun.
A year that I'm going to say goodbye to when we get there. Thank you, sir.
And then the next thing I have is we applied for and received a grant from the Rotary Club of McCall for twelve-hundred dollars to put toward the Sampson Trail Pathways Project. And so this is a letter of acceptance and agreement with the terms.
Awesome.
I would move that we accept the McCall Rotary Grant Award of twelve-hundred dollars for the Sampson Trail Project.
Second.
I'm moving in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I love that the community is supporting that project.
A store, it's going to build, probably however wide their property is up there.
That will take part of that hit for certain. Anything else, Ken, that you have for us?
No Commissioners, that's all I have for you today. Thank you much.
Commissioner Laxson, a pickleball update. Don't be playing pickleball. I've heard that that is the worst sport for hurting yourself. Number one in the country right now.
It reminds me Everybody plays is our age.
I played a lot of sports in, in high school, football, baseball, basketball. Never got hurt in sports, so I started playing softball. Figure that out. Denise Sabona was going to be here to give you guys an update on, so they got some great plans coming up and I'd rather have her share that with you later. The only thing I'd like to, the court's open, they're working hard, the, the plastic bathrooms are in there. Everything's going well. They do need some repair work done on those courts. And the guy that built it has already come up, looked at it and said, yeah, it's his problem and he's going to fix them.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, so that's good.
What kind of repair work? Just cosmetic or?
No, it's not, it's a little bit of a dip. It's, it's, it has to do with the finish coat, not the original court. So they're just going to cut the finish off and refinish it. And they didn't measure the stripes quite right, they're off a little bit. And when they do, when they, when they have big meets, the guys will complain about it.
Yep.
So they're going to get it done early in the year. Anyway, I'll reschedule for Denise as soon as she gives me a date.
Okay.
All I got, guys, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
It's fine.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a few minutes then. If anybody needs a break, we will wait until the assessor gets up here. We still on, Doug?
Madam Chairman, I put us on mute, I took us off mute, so we're ready to go, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning.
Morning.
Morning too.
Um, so we will hear the sixty-three dash six-oh-two B applications first. The first one is for McCall Community Congressional Church. We are recommending a full exemption.
I'll make a motion, we approve a full exemption for RPM four-zero-two A, two-zero A.
I hear a second?
Second.
I moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Next parcel is for the Protestant Episcopal Church. It is Paradise Point Church Camp. And they reported that they used the property for thirty-three days for a non-exempt purpose. So we're recommending thirty-three days assessed and three-hundred-and-thirty-two days exempt.
Would move that we approve the Protestant Episcopal Church for thirty-three days assessed, three-hundred-and-thirty-two exempt.
Second.
I've moved in second at all in favor? Aye.
The next entity is the Nazarene Church, also known as Trinity Pines Conference Center. They have reported that they used the property for a hundred-and-fifty-six days for a non-exempt purpose. Our recommendation is to assess one-hundred-and-fifty-six days and give them two-hundred-and-nine days exempt.
Would move that we approve the Nazarene Church for RP zero-zero-zero-five, RP two-four-two-five, RP four-two-one-five for a hundred-and-fifty-six days non-exempt and two-hundred-and-nine days exempt.
Second.
I've moved in second at all in favor? Aye.
A question?
Yes.
Is that church camp or is that actually the church that's downtown?
No, this is Trinity Pines, out on.
Oh, Trinity Pines.
Uh huh.
Okay, that, I was, so this Trinity Pines.
The next entity is for Highway Chapel. We, we had recommended a denial. I had fielded the property recently and taken pictures. There is roofing equipment such as a tar machine, two dump trailers, Idster ladders, work trucks, a porta potty out behind his house. So I believe that they are still running the roofing company off of that property. However, in the past, we had questioned whether they were having church services or not. I had Noah family that actually attended church service at 6:00 PM Sunday evening. He did have a sermon ready to go, so we are recommending to modify the denial to a partial exemption on the property to exempt the church building.
This is a church structure.
I don't think we got this one, Sue. So give us the dates.
So it's not days?
No, no, so we, what we'll do is we'll exempt the actual church building for the whole year. And, and the rest of the property will be assessed for the whole year. So there's, there's no days.
Those are like half and half, is it, what percentage? Or is there a way to calculate that?
End up being, right now, they are being completely assessed.
Okay.
At one-hundred percent.
Oh, this, this is not two different parcels, it's still one parcel?
It's still one parcel, yeah.
Oh, how do you do that?
I just put zero value on the church and the rest of it will value, at market value as it should.
I see.
So in Idaho code, it must be used exclusively for an exempt purpose, which obviously the church is. But the rest of the property, it appears that there's still a business being ran off of it. So to be fair to this taxpayer, the best that we can, the church building will, will have it be exempt and the rest of it will assess.
Hey, well, I'll make a motion that we approve PRM forty-two, forty-five Highway Chapel Church Building for a full exemption.
I've moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to move on. Actually, Quaker Hill is under six-oh-two B.
Six-oh-two B?
Yeah. I see that it says.
Even though it says C, it should be a B?
That was my error, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, no problem.
My six-oh-two C should have been at the end of Quaker Hill, not in front of it. So Quaker Hill obviously submitted a complete application. They reported using the property for two-hundred-and-thirty days for a non-exempt use. So we are recommending a, to assess what, two-hundred-and-thirty days and give them one-hundred-and-thirty-five days exempt.
Is this, this whole bunch all?
Yeah, the twenty-six parcels.
We don't need to read all those numbers?
You don't need to read them, all they're listed. And I believe the Clerk has all the parcel numbers at his fingertips as well.
Move that we assess Quaker Hill Conference for two-hundred-and-thirty days with one-hundred-and-thirty-five exempt for the, for the stated parcels.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Um, so the last application that is six-oh-two C is the Sabala Foundation, the ice rink and the parking garage. As of Friday, we still could not make contact with them. So I'm going to ask that the board table their application until next Monday. And next Monday will be it, that is the final day that we can address this. So hopefully they will get back to us or they'll answer an email or a phone call, something, so we can find out. They're advertising birthday parties. Forty-five bucks a head. It used to be they fell underneath the three percent diminutist rule. So the food court is what that three percent or less was. And they've converted that now to a bar. But now they're having birthday parties where the kids have, they get to skate. In other words, they're using the whole facility. And so the, we did hand this off to the prosecutor's office for an opinion. We all worked on it, you know, trying to figure out what to do with it. It has been recommended that we find out how many days it was used for birthday parties and treat that as a partial exemption. So, but before we can do that, we need to be able to hear from them and talk to someone. And they just haven't popped back to us yet. I would request, we'll table it and I'll put it on next Monday's agenda.
Okay. We don't need a motion to table it, do we?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table the Richard Sabah Foundation, Inc.
Second. I've moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
And we get to sign some
Yep.
Letters.
Let's just see, Chairman has to sign, is that correct?
No.
Nope. Sorry.
Nice try.
Had to slide that in there.
Hey Doug, this was on my counter this morning, I really don't know what this is. Office came from your office or who's that came from?
It was in our packet. That wasn't from my thought, but I don't know why we would have just gotten that one versus. I don't remember anything on there that was like a hundred-and-ten thousand. I don't remember anything on there that was like 110,000. What we signed was something much larger. Wonder if it was a different grant, but. Sue, are you full staffed as we enter?
Yay.
As we enter this assessor season?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, do you want to go, want me to mute us? Next matter?
Yes, I think so. Hey Terry, we're going to make you wait.
That's okay.
Just in case anybody.
Welcome back to our May 5th, Monday morning meeting.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm happy to be here. I'm Teri Lindenberg with Treasure Valley Transit. We operate mountain community transit. So I wanted to first talk about the ridership, which is very good. We did seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-six. And I want to remind you that in FY22, we did eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. So within the last couple of years, we have increased over thirty-three percent. And also it went past COVID, pre-COVID. So that was 2019. So the services continue to do very well. So I'm very pleased about that.
Is this just going up and down the valley or is this?
Yes, there's seventeen runs a day and they go concurrently. For example, it starts in Cascade at the same time as McCall. And they cross each other in the morning and they cross each other in the evening. And then there's a midday run for those who may be going for half a day. So that's how it sets up, as far as the schedule goes. Last year in FY24, we had to cover a thirty-two thousand dollar shortfall. That's not unusual within the transit world. We saw increases in labor, we saw increases in our insurance. This year alone went up nineteen percent, and that's with a great record. They actually said we were fortunate, it wasn't twenty-five percent. And that's a direct result of the natural disasters, especially in Southern California. That took out the houses and all the vehicles that were there as well. So that's just something that we have to deal with. I do want to say one of our challenges this past year was a driver shortage. Even though we tried to increase wages to be competitive with the school district, we had a significant shortfall. What we ended up having to do was bring drivers from out of the area, such as our Nampa system or our Fruitland system, to assist us. And that meant lodging them during the duration. What we didn't want to do at all was cut back service or just halt it in the middle. You know, so that's something that I'm very happy to say now we're fully staffed. So we've met that challenge without having to cut back. One thing that I'm doing is I know cities, counties, everybody is, is looking at efficiencies, how to scale back any way we can. That's kind of hard to do when your main expense is labor, fuel, and maintenance. But we're looking at things such as maybe we wash the outside of the bus every other day. We're very about cleanliness. I know this is a big challenge for our drivers. They want to be seen in that clean bus they're very proud of. I don't think it's going to be as big of a challenge in the summer, because it's more of a challenge in the winter. So we're looking at all ways of possibly cutting back, you know, ourselves. I've asked for a small increase, three percent this year, just thirteen hundred dollars more than last year. And that's because when I apply, we're talking FY26, we're in the middle of FY25, and all my numbers are FY24. So we're hoping through any means of efficiencies that that will be sufficient. You know, and again, historically, we, since there is no state funding for public transit, this is nothing new. It puts the burdens on the cities and the counties where it normally wouldn't. I think we're approaching being the only state in the union that doesn't support public transit in some fashion. So we continue to work on that. We have an advantage with the city of Donnelly and the city of McCall that we can do the local option tax. That helps us greatly. One challenge I had last year was the McCall local option tax cut us by forty percent, which was a huge challenge. I went to the city of McCall and they made that up. You know, so these are the challenges I face across the board. I, just to reiterate, Treasure Valley Transit is under the Idaho Transportation Department, and we serve a ten-county area. And that includes helping assist senior centers with their transportation funding and needs as well. And that brings me to my next topic. What's going on administratively, you know, with the Federal Transit Administration, and how that impacts us? I had very good news last year that I had been awarded buses under the CARES Act. Well, that funding was put on pause, it has been unpaused. But then FTA was cut by, this is our regional office out of Seattle, was cut by thirty percent. Everything was halted, then they were brought back. And now they're thinking it may be another fifteen percent cuts. So that's something we're dealing with, because it halts all of our grants and all of that, especially those CARES Act. So then that brings me to, all our buses are Ford's. All of the parts, the majority of the parts come out of Mexico. We have a bus right now that serves mountain community transit that's been on hold for six weeks waiting for one part. And that part was to come out of Mexico, because they cannot manufacture that here yet. So these are some of the things that we're dealing with.
You're kind of white hair.
I do. So then, and then our next challenge is, our grant cycles are on a two-year cycle, so we're good through FY26, we know what we're dealing with. We have no idea what we're dealing with in FY27 and 28. And that's the grant I'll be writing for this October. So as we can go through FY26, okay, maybe not the buses, but okay. The real challenge will be FY27, because what we've been told so far by ITD that we may see a two to three percent increase. And that's not going to meet the nineteen percent, you know, of insurance and costs. We were very strategic, and I mentioned this last year, in our CARES Act funding to be able to spread it out, to help us through FY25 and 26. That will be completely expended. So with that, those are some of the challenges that we'll be facing next year. We did have very good news before, that our grants, which are at an operationally at fifty-seven point five federal, forty-three point five local, we're going to go to eighty-twenty. That would have helped us considerably going into 27 and 28. We have no idea how that's going to happen at this point. So anyway, but the good news is FY26, we're hanging in there. I go before the city of Cascade, you know, next week. They, I asked them to go from three thousand to five thousand. I know that it's difficult for them, they have a lot of challenges in the funding arena. And that's why TBT, when we're historically short on the green line funding, have been able to cover that with revenues we make out of Canyon County. So those things will be lowering, I'm sure, as well, because we've seen, we don't know what's going to happen with the Medicaid revenue that we currently get with potential cuts coming down the line too. So there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle. But what I'm glad to say is ridership's doing very well. We're looking at efficiencies. And then the latest thing to add to the white hair. I said last year that we had a new technology coming that was going to be able to give us all this data and statistics and all of that. That was last year. I've never known that hardware and technology issues could be a year long in the making. So we're still dealing with that. We have printed out multiple reports. They don't match what the drivers are doing manually. So they're working on this right now. I actually said to the technology company, if they don't figure this out, you know, within the next two months, especially as we approach October, which is the start of our new grant year, then they're going to have to do something to help us either refund or getting it working. It's just ludicrous to me that it would take a year. And they like to blame this aspect and that aspect, and it's true. They couldn't get their own hardware on the buses to work. Then when they did get it to work, it didn't spit out the right reporting numbers. And so my team has been doing it manually, just like we have in all the other years, just to make sure when those reports do come out, that they're right. So they've assured me that within the next month or two, even if they had to send a team out from, I don't know where, they will do that. So with that, I think I have covered everything, unless you have some questions for me.
Just one question.
Yes.
You know, you go into big cities and ride their buses, you have to pay. Does anybody pay to ride these buses?
I was very fortunate, under the CARES Act funding, that we were able to maintain fare-free. And I'll mention why. Fares are not eligible as match. Why that's a federal regulation, I do not know. So for example, if we get ten thousand dollars in fares, and I think the most we got off of the green line was forty-eight, was about eleven thousand dollars annually. That just comes off our bottom line, which sounds good. Until you realize the federal requirements to process those fares make it almost a wash. We have to have secured counting facilities. We have to have two people that take them on the bus and off the bus, two people that count it. Extensive accounting requirements. So ultimately, when it comes down, it's not a, it's a wash when you look at the amount of time and the accounting that goes through it. They don't treat us any different as a small rural system as if we were the larger system like Boise Urban Stages or Spokane Transit. We're under the very same, you have to have little jumpsuits without pockets and all that kind of stuff. I admit, we did not buy the little jumpsuits without pockets, but we got two people in a, you know, locked room. The fare boxes have to be, you know, locked. And it also, when people think you are a transit system bringing money into, say, the McCall Transit Center, then you have to have the alarm systems, which we currently don't have in our little facility. So when you look at all that, it becomes a wash. So I hope that answers your question. But it is something, though, that we still may consider come this October, depending on how the funding all plays out. Even if it meant an additional two to three thousand that was above all the cost to do it.
Can you make it a non-cash facility? I mean, can you make it non-cash?
That's, we tried that, the last time we did it through PayPal. You know, trying, but what we find is a lot of people want to write a check. They want to deal directly with the driver, they want to pay cash. And especially if they're doing just the daily, maybe they ride two times a week or more. We get a lot of cash, especially like the students. Because for example, where we had six thousand six hundred and twenty students riding, I can guarantee the majority of them, you know, would be paying in cash. So it's, that part is, that part has always been a challenge, but it's coming, sad to say.
Well, it's, you know, you get, like you, just like you say, you went from eleven thousand riders to now seventeen thousand. You know, that's, that can be a moneymaker that helped take care of the maintenance and operation of stuff. How do you get there and how do you coordinate that? That's tough. I get it.
It is. It's a challenge. And I know that a lot of the small rural systems have gone fare-free. You know, that's one of the key reasons for the city of McCall with the local option tax. It was to make sure, since it was a lodging tax, that the buses were fare-free, to get that support. And the same thing, you know, with Donnelly. So we're happy about that. But it is definitely something I'm going to have to consider, because every dollar counts.
How does it impact your budget with, because doesn't Tamarack help supply funding?
Oh, that's an interesting.
Or Brundage?
That's an interesting topic. Brundage, for example, the Brundage Service, one hundred percent supports the grant funding in fares. One hundred percent. So that's, that's an impact, you know, that we're very grateful for. What we do there, depending on the funding, is, you know, and this is also going to be an impact, if we don't see enough federal funding, that could be an impact, we may have to shrink services to some degree. Now, Tamarack, they're in the same position. There's no grant funding for them. So what they have to do for the service that we're working with them, we were able to provide them a bus, and they provided the forty-eight thousand in local match. That was the benefit they got from us. They also, we also billed them for the administrative federal requirements that go along with their service. So they are completely funding the drivers, the maintenance, and the fuel. We're doing the reporting for them. And they operated from November through the end of, or mid-April, I believe. And now they're also looking at scaling it way back. They wanted seven days a week, they had a very robust system in line. Well, they figured they're not going to do weekends. They're going to scale back the trips to and from McCall. And it's going to be a much smaller system right now. But it's one hundred percent funded by them. We just administer the federal requirements, which allowed them to utilize the bus.
Good information. I don't think I have any other questions. Really proud of you guys, you're doing a good thing up here, it's a good service.
Oh, we're very proud. And I do want to say one thing, the Idaho Transportation, I almost forgot. They're doing a video of our service areas. And the area they're most interested in highlighting is McCall, because of all the partnerships and the different levels of service that have come in, especially even Adams County joining in and it being truly regional. So they're really looking at coming in and doing a, what will be like a twenty-minute video and highlighting that at the next Idaho Transportation Department Summit.
It's not just McCall, it's Valley County, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm sorry.
You have to verbiage it so that.
Oh, yes, it's regional. We want to highlight Valley, Adams, and the whole regional process.
The West Central Mountains, that's what we call ourselves.
Okay, the West Central Mountains. I'll make sure they have that.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners, thank you Doug.
Shelley online, perfect.
Is it, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Chairman, we're ready for the next one.
Next up is the Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation. Billy Head is with us from CDH. Hello, Shelley.
Thank you Chairman. Hi, how are you?
Good.
This is not my favorite way to present, but I just couldn't make it up in person today. So I appreciate the opportunity to come back. One of the things that we've done every year, and you've supported us, is the Mental Health Awareness Proclamation. And so I just wanted to see if the board would be willing to re-up it again for May for Mental Health Month. So I didn't know if you had a chance to look it over, or if you'd like me to read it, or what you'd like, how you'd like me to proceed with it.
We did, it was in our packet. So I don't think that we need it read at all. I think this is fabulous. I mean, Valley County is very aware of the mental health challenges that we have, and very proud of the groups that are engaged in helping overcome that. So it's, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of, you know, the whole conversation as far as what we provide our citizens for mental health and for challenges that they have here, so. Do you guys have any questions? If you guys were able to read that.
Yeah, I read all that on the weekend.
Yep, I think it's great to, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation for the month of May.
I'll second it.
Is there anyone moved in second or no in favor?
Hi.
Hi. How's it going with everything else?
It's going really good, I think, so far. We, the consortium's doing really well. We're moving along with year three of four of our grants. We've got some reporting that's coming up for May. I've got Ignite and Yak helping with that and Dr. Hudson. So they're meeting the benchmarks. I'm just so, as always, proud as well to be involved with the group and just really impressed with the work that everybody does in the community from Prevention and Hope Squad with Ignite and the Resource Center and Crisis Care in Mental Health. So I just, our year four will be based on our performance and our reporting for HERSA. So I'm hopeful that we'll get our year four funding. So I'm, it's going really good, thank you for asking. I hope to get up and do a full presentation, maybe in the next month or so, and have the group come with me, and we can give you a more of an in-depth update on what we've been doing.
Perfect. So we know we have funding for at least two more years. And then are those.
Well, we. Go ahead.
Are those funds still available to apply for into the future, or we know?
We've, it's, what we have, so we, the year three ends in August of, thirty-first of August of this year. And then if we receive our fourth year of funding, we'll have one more year through 2026. We've applied for two additional grants for Valley County. We applied for a, they're both through HERSA, a pathways grant to engage high school and middle school youth in behavioral health and substance use services and having a training program. So we've applied for that grant, we won't know until July. And then we had an additional grant that we applied for quite a few months ago, and they extended the award date notice out to July. And that's for increasing healthcare services, and specifically for increasing crisis care with Ignite Idaho and Central Idaho Council. So there's been other opportunities we continue to watch. I'm not sure if they'll extend the behavioral health grant, have a new opportunity to apply, but we continue to, our grant writer watches grants dot go for us, and we continue to apply. So we've got two pending. And then I'll know more, I think, as we get closer into year four, if they're going to offer. Sometimes they do offer new cohorts for the same funding, so I hope so. I'm hoping we're going to be able to continue.
Perfect. Any more questions for Shelley?
No, I don't, I'm good. Appreciate it, Shelley.
Thank you for bringing that to us.
You're very welcome, thank you for the support. And I'm going to put that in the Star News once it gets all signed and official. And then, like I said, I'll come up in the next month or two and do a more formal presentation on where we're at with BECOR and funding and stuff. So I appreciate the board's support, thank you Chairman Mopin, and I'll talk to you soon.
All right, see you Shelley.
Take care. Thanks.
Next up on the agenda is the Old Council Road Validation, Facts and Conclusions. I don't recognize you without contacts on.
I know, it's kind of weird, I got in a fight over the weekend, so I'm wearing my eyeball heel.
Just tell all the bars, man.
Well, yeah, you know, that's just what I'm telling people, it looks better, sounds better. As you guys know, the matter that I am here for is to present to you guys the findings of fact and conclusions for the hearing that we had on April 21st regarding the Old Council Road. You guys did vote unanimously to validate the council road as a public road. And so what I have today is the findings of facts and conclusions for you to sign. And then also the Resolution Number 2025-11 that validates Old Council Road as a public road. And I did make that change for you, Sherri, thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I'll make a motion that we, oh, let's see, sign Old Council Road Validation, Facts and Conclusions, and the Resolution 2025-11.
Second. Before we approve, did you guys have any questions? The only questions that I had. Um, before we approve, um, did you guys have any questions? The only questions that I had on it. The, the DL Evans Bank, you know, have we been in communication with them on moving that road or?
Um, we have not heard anything. I do apologize. I got back Saturday morning, uh, from a week vacation. So I haven't chatted with Arnie. We did not hear anything prior to, uh, when I left on Monday from them. Um, we haven't had no further comments.
It looks like this leaves the door open for them if they choose to move that at their expense.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Yeah, so we would, we would be able to, um, move the road under the vacation and then an easement process if we wanted to relocate the first mile of the road there.
Um, has been moved in second? Are there any in favor?
Aye.
Have we ever heard anything from the other, um, McCall Associates that owns that other piece of ground?
That I'm aware of.
Crazy.
There is a resolution. It's kind of, I guess we're all three of you guys and Mr. Miller.
Can't believe we worked together and you still spell my name wrong.
I didn't, I didn't spell it. That was Arnie.
Oh, he's really in trouble.
It's your page.
Yeah, you're gonna
Is my line, I think my line's on there.
You have to get a buzz cut like Doug.
I have a weird shaped head.
Thank you.
I tried that before.
Not everybody's got good-looking bald heads, huh? Don't touch your bald dog.
I'm in trouble in twenty years.
Take biotin to Neil.
That a bald guy said, tell me one time, he says, you know, there's only so many perfect heads. The rest they cover with hair.
Well, that's, that's true for women too. So therefore I take biotin regularly and all the other things that I can take.
I've seen very many bald women. I got a mitt hat. I think Callan's does sign it.
Nope, she did. Hers is
Well, mine was, my line was on one page and my name was on the other.
I got a mitt when Fay was doing chemo. She was, I went up there to the chemo deal and they were trying on wigs. Fay's blonde. And so I'm walking into the room and there's there's different people and women and men that are in there. At the very end, there was a room. And, uh, here's a lady sitting there just like Callan. And it's like, I walked right by the room. And Fay's Neil. I turned around, walked back. She was a brute ass.
He had to try different things.
Totally caught me off guard.
Print this off one more time.
Okay.
Still had one more draft on.
I'm gonna take a real one.
Madam Chairman, I'm just gonna put us on mute for a few minutes.
Madam Chairman, we're back on.
Next up on our agenda is to approve, uh, some software. Director Wilcox.
Morning Commissioners. Um, it's not really approving new software. What it is, is, you know, we're using Tyrol, Tyler's payroll system for our time and attendance. And there's been some requests to, um, make that a little bit easier and more streamlined. And Tyler does have a mobile app that can be used on your phone that, um, is easier for, I think the Sheriff's Office had requested it. It's easier than trying to go to the website on the anyways, the way that it works is it integrates with an identity provider so that folks can, um, log in with their um, same county credentials to log in because it's tied to the employee. And they're I don't want to do a big old long thing about, um, identity providers, but Microsoft Office Three Sixty Five is one that integrates with basically everybody and we're already using that. So Tyler has their own, but it's very expensive. But as somebody who is using uh, Microsoft Three Sixty Five, we can use our own. And so that's what we would like to do. And so for whatever reason, the way that Tyler's system works, they require us to just submit a zero dollar quote. Basically just saying that we're not going to use Tyler's identity provider. We're going to use our own. And so just to do our, our due diligence and our prudence, we just, you know, sent it through legal to make sure that they were okay with it because it's technically kind of an add-on to our existing Tyler contract. So this is really just to, uh, get the final approval, um, to go ahead and engage with Tyler to get that mobile app up and going.
Well, it's, uh, I know, I have, I know a contractor friend of mine, his employees do that. And that, they do everything off their phone and just submit it into the bookkeeper and, and it just, they track it that way. He said it works really good. It's
Yeah, I think
This kind of what you're talking about doing here.
Correct, yes. And one of the big drivers was the Sheriff's Office because their folks, they, they clock in right from home and hit the road and they're out doing their thing and, or, you know, maybe they're on their way into work and they have to clock in and sort of make it easier for those folks and some of the folks that were, that work from home, um, to get clocked in and out. So
Okay.
Something we're already paying, paying for through Tyler. This is just getting it up and going basically.
Perfect. Would move that we approve the workforce direct software.
Second.
Been moved in second? Are there any in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Sorry for being late.
Acosta, something sweet, savory.
Getting a sweet tooth today.
Yes. On a diet. I always have a sweet tooth.
I don't think sweet tooth and diet go together.
Don't. That's the problem. Up next is our emergency manager, Mr. Bonilla. The move forward on the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Jeremy's?
Oh, he has password. We call him and he won't answer.
Send him an email.
All right. I'm here to, for a couple of action items that, um, from last Monday. So first one is, is, uh, go ahead and to move forward with getting scope of practice contracts to prosecuting attorneys for you to review for the All-Hazard Mitigation Grant Rider. Uh, and the other is to utilize some of the emergency manager funding that was allocated, uh, for this budget cycle, a thousand dollars of it to develop the evacuation, uh, plan map. Cool. Oh, yeah, that thousand dollar, we talked about that last time.
We put ten thousand and one's budget last year for these types of things. So that's definitely in there. The approval to move forward on the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, do we have the cost estimate, not knowing if there's funding? Um, we won't have to go out for bid on it, but we're going to have to approve up to whatever that cost is to complete? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just asking to, so the question is, is to move forward with developing a plan, therefore me getting um, scope of work contracts to, for you guys to review.
Is that the plan you were talking about with the lady from Brand over there at, uh, BSU? Is it that?
Yeah, Dr. Brand. It's the, uh, All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Right.
She's done a scope, she's done a scope of practice based on the grant. And it's just over sixty-two thousand dollars
That's what I remember.
For the grant. Um, and she just utilized what we put in the grant narrative as the scope of practice. But we still have to have the prosecuting attorney review that, uh, project application contract before you guys see it. So I just want approval. If we're going to move forward, then that's my, I just need approval to move forward with that rather than just have the prosecutor do something that may not go anywhere because I know they're busy.
Personally, I think all counties should have a hazard mitigation plan. Whether there's funding behind it for some of those things or not, it's still, it's collaborative in nature. It keeps all of our agencies working together. You know, we will have to find funding sources if it's not federal funding sources, but I think it's, to me, it's really imperative that all of our agencies have a plan to put in place should we have a hazard. I mean, it's not if, it's when. So to me, that's imperative. I would entertain a motion to move forward on the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve, move forward on All-Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
I will second it.
Moved in second? Are there any in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I will say, I, although I'm in favor of the plan and stuff, I do wish that this wasn't last minute. And I wish we could go out to bid. I know it's under that amount, but I still think we should always be trying to find the lowest bidder or, or the best price for the county taxpayers. I don't like that we're rushing through this. We have six months to get it done. Technically by the end of the year.
It's going to take longer than six months.
Right. But because
I'm not ready to tell you that.
We're on a time crunch. We don't have time to go out to bid and see what other options there are. So although I support this, I wish we would have planned a little sooner and seen if there were other options.
What I'm hearing you say is as we move forward, you have a commissioner that's asking to make sure that in year four we're pre-planning to go out for bid for who's going to help upgrade those as we move forward. Right now, I think Dr. Brand is the person to do it because she's doing so much other work in the county. She already has information that will inform this plan. And so I think for right now, she's probably the best one to do it anyway. But, um, I'm, I'm hearing moving forward that there needs to be more pre-planning and updates. So
So the only reason that we're doing it this way right now is because we were waiting in hopes that the grant would get approved and then we would in hopes that the grant would get approved and then we would have gone through the grant process that way. But since January, things had changed and we didn't. We were in limbo whether that grant was going to be approved or not. That's why it's is we were hoping that we would have it done earlier this year so that we could have more time. It isn't the fault of the state or my office or any other offices. We didn't know whether we were waiting to see what the fruition or decisions were on that mitigation grant dollars. And we were advised to hold off until we got a decision from the state.
So we have the next item to utilize.
Get your phone, Jeremy.
Oh, I need a would move that we utilize one thousand dollars from the emergency services manager budget contingency account for the evacuation zone.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor? Aye.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
All right, next up on our agenda, we have a public hearing. We are going to take up again the tabled item from April twenty eighth, so I would have a motion to take that off the table.
I would move that we take this item off the table.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor? Aye. So now we're working on City of Cascade ordinance twenty five dash oh four and then the City of Donley impact area twenty five oh five and along with that, the resolutions. So we had the public hearing last week. There was a few questions. And I think Commissioner Caldwell, you were the one that wanted to think through it a bit more. Do we have additional questions? We would like to answer.
No, I am good to move forward.
Okay. Thompson, do you have any more questions?
No, I was good.
Okay. So we will go first to the City of Cascade impact area. So the adoption is this is so is this ordinance adoption that you're giving us, Cinda, with the little property included? Okay, that's what I needed. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
Uh, one question for Cindy real quick. That that little property, that's that's not inside the city limits at all, is it? Okay, just contiguous to it. Okay. Then I move to adopt ordinance number twenty five twenty twenty five dash zero four with attached Cascade Impact Area Boundary Map with the little property included in order to reestablish the City of Cascade Impact Area Boundary in accordance with Idaho sixty seven dash six five two six, subject to approval of the written findings of facts and conclusions of law. The ordinance shall not be recorded until such time that the findings of facts and conclusions of law are approved.
Second. It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next up is ordinance twenty five dash oh five, City of Donley impact area.
I would move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero five with attached Donley Impact Area Map in order to reestablish the City of Donley Impact Area Boundary in accordance with Idaho Code sixty seven dash six five two six, subject to the approval of the written findings of facts and conclusions of law, along with approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash ten Valley County Comprehensive Plan governing City of Donley Impact Area. The ordinance and resolution shall not be recorded until such time that the findings of fact and conclusions of law are approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Then we have resolution twenty five dash ten, the Valley County Comprehensive Plan adopted in the Donley impact area.
That was part of the motion. Being Donley.
For Donley. Okay, so all of that is one. Okay, perfect. Thank you for coming and visiting us. It's always good to see you here.
Thank you for your motion.
Susan, I owe you lunch again.
Thank you very much.
You're back.
Lunch?
I owe the mayor lunch again. Hey. All right, sounds good. We'll have to get the ordinance published. My name's. So once we did their map, I guess we did have the public hearing, never mind. I'm just thinking public hearing time, timing and all of this. As we move forward with McCall, we will need a map that has been negotiated and approved before we move forward with our public hearing.
Wow, my signature is not working today.
Yeah, I'll leave direction on what you want that to look like.
Go share.
With the ordinance.
So Cindy, we are having a public workshop on September nineteenth, starting at one.
May nineteenth?
May nineteenth. I am really here today.
Don't jump us to September yet.
Not yet, yeah.
I am really not here today. May nineteenth, starting at one for two hours. We will be discussing a lot of things after the meeting today. Okay, then Clark Miller, if you will mute us until eleven.
Madam Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna take us all the way off since we're gonna be off.
That's great.